Karen, if you could please call the roll.
Mayor Pollan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Setula, excused, and Councilman Smith.
Here.
And Town Manager Hicks.
Here.
All right, moving on to the approval of minutes, November 4th town meeting minutes and November 20th work session minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the minutes as presented.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Moving on to reports of officers, boards, and committees. First, the permits report.
Building use and occupancy sign permits issued during the month of November 2019. Building permits, 11-419 Restore MD LLC, 10 Helen Court. Reconstruction of...
Multi-family dwelling.
Multi-family dwelling duplex after fire. 11-419 CMI Contractors for 4445 Indian Head Highway LLC. For 4445 Indian Head Highway. Tenant fit out for College of Southern Maryland. 11-1319 Vivint Solar for Phil and Brandy Thompson, 10 Beth Court. Roof-mounted solar panels. 11-1319 Vivint Solar for Byron and Jessica Davis, 6 Beth Court. Roof-mounted solar panels. 11-2019 Rainbow Construction Standard...
Single-family dwelling.
Single-family dwelling, sorry. I'm probably rusty at this. Five Stewart Place. 11-2619 Vivint Solar for James Briscoe, 103 Thompson Lane. Roof-mounted solar panels. Use and occupancy permits, 11-119 Helen Boone, 36 Mattingly Avenue, Powder Room. 11-619 Catherine Prather, 82 Mattingly Avenue, Deck. 11-1419 4445 Indian Head Highway LLC. At 4445 Indian Head Highway. Building shell only. 11-2019 LaShandee Kobe, 5 Pine Street, Deck. Oh, wait a minute. Sorry. No use, temporary use and occupancy permits, demolition permits, grading permits, signed permits, or temporary signed permits were issued during the month of November.
Thank you very much, Karen. Moving on, finance report. Ginger?
November 2019 Finance Report. Beginning cash balance, $710,940.52. Total revenues, $431,016.94. Total expenditures, $557,408.56. With an ending cash balance of $584,548.90. Total investments, $786,283.65. Any questions?
Moving on, no town manager's report or planning commission report. However, we do have code enforcement report.
Code enforcement report, November 2019. The town performed 10 rental inspections during the month. The town also issued 28 violations during the month. You had two trash and rubbish, 23 rental license violations, and three property maintenance violations. The town also sent out 11 notices of fine, and all of those were for rental licenses as well. No citations, and the town cleared four violations, two of which were trash and rubbish, one for rental license, and one for vehicle.
All right, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Ryan. What is a rental license violation?
Rental license violation is your rental license expires every other year, so every two years. If you don't reapply for your rental license, we send you out a letter. We start with a letter, and we follow up with a fine letter, and then we send a citation.
So they have renters, but they're not getting the appropriate paperwork to...
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Parks and Recreation Committee report, Environmental Sustainability Committee report.
First, I'd like to thank Karen for standing in for Annie. I was gonna call her Andrea. Thank you, and some of those acronyms, I know if you don't do it often, you can't remember those. I'd like to see if everyone is aware that Google has a lot of online courses that you can take for free, right? So as we're trying to build up the workforce in this area, Google has the digital, it's called Digital Garage. And it's free courses for data, online marketing, all these things. So please get the word out that there are a lot of free resources. I mean, it's, Google is a reputable company, so you don't have to worry about some scam when they're trying to get money out of you. But these are free courses, and a lot of high schools are using these to get, increase the technical acumen of their student population. I want to say season's greetings to everyone. This time of year, we seem to be a little kinder, right? I wish we could be this way the majority of the year. But also be aware that a lot of people take that kindness for weakness. So if you have packages being delivered, make sure that someone is there to get them. We're still trying to work with Amazon to get a, it's like a box where you, they can deliver your items, so you don't have to worry about the porch bandits. So we're worrying about porch pirates, I'm sorry. And lastly, the schedule of events that we're gonna have for 2020 will be coming out soon. It'll be published in January when it comes to the environmental sustainability. We get more participation when it comes to things with the environment. We had a cleanup here recently, and the wonderful couple in the back there were very instrumental in that, so we're gonna continue that. We don't get as much when it comes to kids' activities, right? There's not a lot of things for kids to do, but we just, for some reason, can't get them to come out and participate. But we will not give up, but we're gonna put mainly our focus on the environmental things. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on, Bureau of Fire Prevention report. Wayne?
Greetings, everybody. I'm filling in for Jeff tonight, so I'll try to cover all the bases. November report responses, we had 33 fire responses as well as assist the public. The ambulance had 30 responses. The reminder, Tuesday, December 3rd, during the Christmas tree lighting and everything, we're gonna be delivering Santa Claus over here. So, ready for that. Also, on December 23rd, two days before Christmas, we will run St. Nick through the town of Indian Head. And I usually kick off around 6 o'clock, so hopefully rain or shine, whatever, or snow, so we get it. Smart, the smoke alarm system, program is in full swing. Over the last couple of weeks, we've put in over 86 smoke alarms. We're working with the American Red Cross. Jeff might have mentioned that. They're donating a lot of them. So we're moving right along. We've taken smoke detectors down that have been like 15 years old. Not knowing if they're gonna work or not, but if you got an old detector that's more than 10 years old, we have to give you a new one, or you can get one at the hardware store. Christmas fire safety. If you're gonna use a real tree, make sure you water it, keep it well hydrated. The safest tree, of course, is the artificial tree. I got lazy. I have an artificial tree, so I don't have to worry about running to buy one every year. Also, no open flames or candles or anything close to your trees or out where they could catch on to some household furnishings. No multiple extension cords. You don't wanna match them up running through the house, so be careful on that. And then last but not least, your chimneys. Clean your chimneys, and don't burn your Christmas wrappings and paper in the fireplace or the wood stove. That's bad for it. It'll clog it up big time. And that is it. Any questions?
Wayne, I have a question. With carbon monoxide, do you guys get a lot of calls on that, and would you recommend getting one of those?
We ran one the other day on Sandrecourt, but we found out it was, it was good she called, but it was old, and it had bad, low batteries in it. So we took it down, and so it wouldn't annoy her anymore. But it was a good thing. She called, and the fire board told her evacuate the house. We got down for meters and double-checked, but she didn't have any petroleum or gas in the house. It was all electric. So that was a good giveaway there, 'cause usually if you have a malfunction gas furnace or oil or something, that can put out carbon monoxide. So that was happy ending there. She's gonna buy a new one. We give out the smoke alarms, but you have to go to the hardware store for the CO alarms, carbon monoxide. And you can put it just about anywhere, 'cause carbon monoxide's light. It'll travel through the house. If it gets thick enough concentration, your detector on CO will go off. And if you really wanna get fancy, you can go to the hardware store and get one that's a smoke alarm with a CO device in there, and that's even better yet, so.
So you would advocate getting a carbon monoxide detector?
What's that?
You would advocate getting a carbon monoxide detector?
Yeah, I would. I mean, it probably wouldn't hurt, but if you got a total electric home, no propane, no gas, no oil, you know, probability will probably be light. But then again, if you have a smoldering fire somewhere, basement or something like that, a smoldering fire, before you smell the smoke, sometimes it'll put out carbon monoxide. So it's all deadly, so it's good to cover all the bases.
All right, thank you.
There's lots of things to do in the month of December around the town. We have our annual tree lighting program, which will kick off the season tomorrow, Tuesday, December 3rd, here in the pavilion. Starts at 7 o'clock, and the holiday music will be from the Indian Head Elementary, General Smallwood, and Henry Elaki students. Of course, as Wayne said, Santa will arrive on the truck at the end, and that officially kicks off after the tree's been lit. And during the program, and of course, it's free admission, and we are accepting unexpired canned goods and/or monetary donations at the door. And those will benefit the Neighbors Eager to Serve or NETS program, which attends to the needs of the individuals and families here on the western side of the county. And then we have our gingerbread classes, which I still have openings for. It's on Friday, December 6th, and Sunday, December 8th. And there is a fee for it, and if you're interested in signing up, my information is on the flyer, and all my flyers are on the back counter, by the way. All the flyers we have, the things we're discussing tonight. And then we have Tuesday, December 10th, is our Holiday Festival and Vendor Fair from 6 to 9 here in the building. We'll have live holiday entertainment featuring the Southern Maryland Line Dancers and the Doc Stevens Band. We have children's activities and letters to Santa. Of course, we'll have delicious refreshments and hot apple cider. And the painter family from Indian Head here will have their running antique train display. We'll have photos with Santa. We have the gingerbread house contest, and we'll have some vendors and crafters around the room selling their wares. It is a dollar donation at the door for all ages, and all donations and proceeds collected go to the NETS program. Then on Saturday, December 14th, from 6 o'clock to 8, we have our annual community dinner and memorial ribbon ceremony here in the building. It's a free community dinner, open to everyone in the public. We do have some lively holiday music and entertainment. It's co-hosted by the town and the Indian Head United Methodist Church. Ribbons can be purchased by emailing or calling me or dropping in at the town hall. The ribbon deadline to place an order is Monday, December 9th. They're $2 a ribbon or 6 for 10. And we do have a beautiful tree that was donated out there, just outside the doors here, by the Hayes family a number of years ago. And that's where we place the ribbons in memory of your loved ones. And then we do a little ceremony at this community dinner where we read off the names. Ribbon purchase is not required to attend the dinner, and any of the proceeds, again, go to the NETS organization to help out the individuals and families on the western side. And once you're done with Christmas, the annual tree removal, Christmas tree removal by the town, it will start January 2nd, which is a Thursday, because Christmas, or New Year's Eve is on a Wednesday, and it will follow every Wednesday after that, the 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th. Put your Christmas tree out on the curb, just like you would your recycling. Please don't leave your decorations or your lights or anything on it, 'cause we're really not interested in those. And we'll pick it up for you and dispose of it properly. And as Councilwoman Smith alluded to, 2020, the meetings for the next coming year, our monthly town meetings, will be Monday, January 6th. And then Community Activities Committee, our first meeting of the year, will be Tuesday, January 7th. Planning Commission will be Wednesday, January 15th, and then we'll wait for the Environmental Sustainability and Parks and Rec report in January. And finally, least but not, yeah, not least, save the date for Saturday, May 2nd, 2020, for the Taste of Indian Head. We plan to expand it indoor and outdoor. Crafters and vendors show. We're actually taking the spring craft fair that we were doing with the Indian Head Fire Department's Auxiliary, which we usually host the first Saturday in April, and we're gonna move it to this day. We're gonna invite, it's all crafters for that one, but we're gonna invite vendors, and we're gonna hopefully expand outside. We wanna do live entertainment inside and outside, local food trucks, businesses, organizations, and lots of activities and so on. So more information to follow on that. And of course, our 100th anniversary celebration will be on Saturday, September 26th, in 2020. It'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It will kick off with a parade, and then lots of fun activities and memorabilia and all kinds of entertainment, local entertainment, and all that kinda stuff. So more information on that will follow in 2020. That's it for the town, and then we have, from the United Way, they have a Community Connections by United Way of Charles County service pop-up. Dental services by appointment, food and hygiene items, pet supplies, grief support, and more at no cost. The mobile library will also be on site, Saturday, December 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the Community Outreach Center in the Brian's Road Shopping Center is where that location is. It's in the complex where the old Safeway used to be. That's one thing. And then Christmas at Mount Aventine at Chapman State Park, December 7th and 8th, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. They have decorations, live music, gift shop, bake sale, and more, traditional music and carols. And they have creative crafts and lots of fun things to do, and its donation is requested at $5 per vehicle. And it proceeds, the proceeds benefit restoration projects at Chapman Park. And then we have Kris Kringle Christmas Market at the Charles County Fairgrounds on December 13th, 14th, and 15th, with the wonderful choreographed fireworks that are done on Saturday at dark. And they have tons of things for you to do and tons of vendors and crafters there. And all that stuff is on the back of the flyer back there. And then, of course, we have our Charles County Recreation Parks and Tourism Guide is online, and there's also some copies back there. So that's it. So there's lots to do in the month of December.
Excuse me, Karen.
Uh-huh.
The tree removal.
Yes.
Are those real trees and artificial, or just real trees?
Real trees. The, if, I don't, we don't take artificial trees.
If you put an artificial tree out for your trash pickup, yes, we will pick it up.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Lots to do in December. Moving on, Community Policing Report. Officer Curtis?
Nothing really big to report. The only thing I remember mine is it's the holiday season. Trying, when you guys, when, like after Christmas, when you're unwrapping, unwrap your gifts, and you're ready to throw your stuff away, your big TV screen box, and all the fun toys, everything that you guys have, I would wait until the day of trash to leave it outside, because all you're doing is you're advertising to everybody else what you just got in the house, right? So you have the people with sticky fingers who, you know, don't work for anything, and they wanna come and steal your hard-working stuff. Now they know what you have in your house, and when you're not home, they'll come in there and they'll take it. When you guys go to the mall, to the Walmart, Target, wherever, to go shopping, if you guys get gifts or anything, you put it in the, put it in the car and walk away, then try and hide it. Put a blanket over it, a jacket over it, try and put it in the trunk of the vehicle. Most, most if not all SUVs have the tinted windows in the back. Try to throw it in the back to where it can't be seen, just so people don't break into cars. Make sure your cars are locked. And I say it every month, make sure your cars are locked, make sure your houses are locked. No one can break into them. 'Cause all it's gonna take is, it'll take them one time to open up the door, and everything you have in there is gonna be gone. Also, be aware of your surroundings, you know? If you're walking from the mall, or if you're walking to Target or wherever, just keep looking around you. Make sure you don't have anybody following you. Make sure you're in a lighted area. You're parked, you don't, you don't park in the very last parking spot in the back of the parking lot, you know, where you have to go someplace by yourself on the side of the building. Just make sure that you're somewhere where you can be seen, or someone can see you at all times. You know, there's been incidents in the Waldorf area where people have been snuck up on and robbed. So just try to be aware of everything that's around you, and always have your phone on you. That's it. Any questions?
There was a tremendous police presence today, right there at the Richmore Street Plant. Is there anything you need to be concerned about?
Nope. So what happened this afternoon, without going into huge details, that it was someone called, made a prank phone call. We take every call serious, 'cause you never know what's fake and what's not fake. This individual made a prank phone call to us and said some serious things that happened to him. The things that they said, we brought everybody. We had fire, we had police, we had the ATVs, we had everybody out there. So, but what it ended up being was, after about three, four hours, about three hours of searching in the woods, it was determined that it was a prank call and it was unfounded.
The incident that's been floating on Facebook that happened on Jennifer Drive, my first question is, was it real? And if so, is there any kind of update on it? I live right around the corner somewhere.
So I wasn't, I was not working when that incident happened. I was brought to my attention of that incident through multiple people. I pulled the call sheet up, I looked at it, and from what, I'll say from what was said on Facebook to what was, what I saw in the notes from what the officers had wrote, were two completely different things. It wasn't, it was, I'm not calling anybody a liar, I'm not saying things haven't been done, and it just wasn't documented, or somebody may have said stuff happened that didn't happen. I don't know. I wasn't there. But I saw the statement that was written on Facebook, and I saw the statement that was written on the, on our call screen between the officers that were there and dispatcher, and it wasn't, it wasn't the same.
So you don't know if there was a group of kids, and one of the kids had it done?
All I, I don't know. All I know is that there was, it was all floating on Facebook, and when I pulled the call sheet up, the call sheet was that there was a kid who said that he got robbed, and that the police didn't even call. That was it. And then there was an officer that made contact with the individual automatically at the park area, and nothing came of that. So I don't, other than that, I don't know. There was nothing, there was a canvas that was gone in the neighborhood, in the area, and nobody else was found. The one guy that they did see is the one I just said, and they made contact with him, and they determined that he had nothing to do with the incident.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just like to add, will you, I'm sorry, don't answer.
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Riverwatch. Is there, is there an officer that's in charge of Riverwatch because you talk about safety? Do you have a semi truck or a semi, full rig that parks there every so often? Maybe, maybe there's a hazard trying to get two cars, and then we got a truck parked on the street. Is there, is there an officer that enforces that, or, I mean, how can we regulate that? 'Cause that's a commercial vehicle in residential areas. That's a DOT violation in itself.
Is it parked on Riverwatch Boulevard?
Yep.
Yeah, so our rules doesn't allow for cars to be, be parked in residential areas. So we have an after-hours contact number, and Karen is really good at getting in touch with the officers.
I've called several times, and there's never been a ticket or anything written on that truck. So every time it parks there, I call the non-emergency number. The officer's come by, he turns around, and he's back out.
Okay, can, can I give you my number? You call me. Can you call the town hall?
Sure.
Okay.
So you're saying you call the sheriff directly?
I called it, non-emergency, Prince George's, I mean, Charles County.
Okay, gotcha. We're advocating, you call us, you call our town, right?
And then our code enforcement can take, you know, we can take it from there, our code enforcement. Is it parked physically within the space that's designated?
It takes up two, three spaces if you got that one.
I've seen it a couple of times.
So there's, so I'm in charge of, I have, I'm a community police officer. I have multiple neighborhoods on the west side, and also have the town in it. So I would be, I would be the one that would go out. I haven't gone out there. I haven't, or just the first time I've heard of it. But there is a difference, and I know it's kinda hard to understand, it doesn't make sense. There is a difference between you calling the sheriff's office and making an complaint, and then you call them, because they can, because it's a town and their ordinance, they can do a little bit more. 'Cause they'll come out, they'll go out, and they'll look at it, and then I'll get the letter on my desk, and then I'll be able to take action.
I'll have our code enforcement officer control that area. You wouldn't happen to know where the owner of said vehicle resides, would you?
No, I don't think so.
I'm not sure. I think you look out, I'm not sure.
Look out.
You don't look out, but I'm not sure.
Thank you.
I have one other question about, about Riverwatch. In the summertime, every guy that just moved in in Kern, and every morning, about 5, 6 o'clock in the morning, he takes off, speeding down Riverwatch Boulevard from out of Kern straight to the stop sign. And you see this, you see the treadmills in the street. We called the county about that several times. He come home in the evening, race up and down the street, got all his friends come there, and all their cars are souped up, and they always doing it every day. You keep calling. Even one dispatcher said, oh, he must be in the military, and he's the only one could be doing that, 'cause that's what military do.
Hey, wait, wait.
I'm just, I'm just saying something. He sent the car out, because it was 11 o'clock at night, at a music blast, they came on, told him to turn the music back. But every morning, I guarantee you, 5:30, 6 o'clock, you can catch him. He does it every morning.
Again, call them, the town, and then I'll get it on my desk, and I'll be able to look. This is, again, it's the first time I've heard of it. I haven't, I haven't heard anything, which is that.
After the beef, can we have a little conversation, so you give me, you make a model, and then I run that over to the officer, and we'll go from there?
Gotcha.
Thank you.
We take these sleepy towns and safety very seriously, and we have always had great community policing officers, so we'll run it around.
Since we're on the subject, buses, I saw one almost get creamed the other day.
So buses are, are you talking about?
I'm talking about school buses, and they turned right in front of traffic.
A school bus?
And went hair-asset across the street.
A school bus did?
Yeah.
So anytime, school bus a little bit different. Anything with, again, call them, and I'll get it.
Luckily, it was empty, but at the same time, they're doing it empty, they're probably doing it on a Tuesday.
You got bus numbers?
Nope, but I wanna get you one, 'cause I know which one it was.
Okay, call them, but also our traffic operations unit, they deal with all school buses, school bus complaints. They have an officer that's strictly designated for school buses. So talk to them, or leave a complaint with them, and I can reach out. Hey, I'll do something, or I'll reach out to our traffic operations unit and let them know, hey, bus, you know.
I was standing at clarity when it happened, so that's the reason I kinda got my attention.
Yeah, no problem. So there's enough, and we'll look into it. And the issue with, people, I get that there's a lot of bus complaints. Not so much that the bus drivers themselves, but other vehicles, and the biggest, it started hitting us, the complaints started hitting really hard after last year when that boat broke ahead, and the officer shot. But the problem that we have that we have is that you call us for the bus complaint, but you don't wanna be a witness to it.
I'll be a witness.
I'm just saying, like, people, people don't wanna witness, 'cause I didn't witness it, so I can't write a ticket if I didn't witness it. And people will call, and they want us to do something, but they're not, they're not saying, hey, I wanna be a witness, or I'm gonna work for what you did, just wanna make us aware. And that's great, make us aware, let us know what's going on, and we'll go out there and try and, you know, look, look at it, try and find it. And if he finds some officer, we're gonna pull him out and make the stop. But how many people do something, they see a black and white police mark, police car right there? Right? So this is what we always say, if you see something, say something, and give us the help from the public, and then we can try to do, we can do a better job at what we need to do.
And also, when you do get the bus number, there is a, I'll give you the phone number to call to the Department of Transportation for the school. And also, there's an online complaint form that you can do in conjection. That's what I always do.
Good. If I have kids there, so I don't, I'm not in the loop.
It doesn't matter, right.
I mean, I don't have that information, so I mean.
I do, I do a phone call, and then I follow up with the actual complaint, the online complaint, to back up what I said, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm curious, what is the town gonna do on the weekend with traffic and trail and park down, what are you all gonna do?
What are we going to do? We're gonna, it's a violation of our vehicle ordinance, so we'll send out a violation, but first we have, excuse me?
What are you going to do?
First, we send out a violation, but first we have to figure out who the vehicle belongs to. So we wouldn't send it to the actual occupant, 'cause we don't believe that he probably owns the vehicle. He probably works for a company. Companies, who we probably address the letter to. So it starts with violation. So it would be a violation, and it would end with a citation, and then we would end with a Tony, in most cases.
The problem with that is you get a lot of commercial vehicles that have the main tags, or they'll have something that the company's out of Texas or something.
Correct, it's never anybody local.
Right, so you're sending a citation to an empty mailbox that no one's gonna ever see. That's another issue dealing with commercial vehicles. You'd be lucky if you get one with a valid tag.
Well, they're parked in McWilliams Street also.
I think he said Williams as well. Any other questions?
What do you consider a commercial vehicle? Are we just talking big rigs? No?
No.
A commercial vehicle can be considered anything used to carry freight. So, if you're not making a delivery, you can't stay in, it can't stay on a town street. I'm, I'm not quoting it verbatim from the town code, but anything used for carrying freight.
So, like the vans that are parked on the sides of the roads, where you can only get one car through?
Box trucks, semis.
Those, those darn included?
It depends on what type of van, you just talking about the general caravan, or passenger van, and the?
No, well, it's, it's a business van. Right there at the corner, Indian Head Avenue and Jennifer, and only one car can ever get through, and that's been years.
Well, I think what we need to do is balance, because these are probably need to be working, right? So, maybe if we have an area where we can designate for commercial vehicles to park, because we need people to work so they can live in town, else they'll move somewhere else. So, maybe we can put that on our next agenda, to try to designate a location where these vehicles can park, and so they can still provide for their families.
They just shouldn't have distracted traffic, and that's part of the problem.
Right, well, we have areas that could probably be a viable solution. I, I would want someone to move, because they can't park, um, in town, right? But this is how they provide for themselves, and pay taxes.
Okay.
So, we'll put that on the next work session.
Any other questions for Officer Curtis?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no briefings, no presentations or recognitions, no resolutions, no ordinances, uh, no petitions. Moving on to unfinished business, 2020 town meeting time change, we're still discussing a potential time change. We've gotten, um, written, uh, comment, as well as some verbal comment, so at this time, I'd like to open it up, if, if anyone would like to talk about a potential time change, we're looking at moving it a bit earlier. Uh, we don't know what that time was, we had talked about potentially, um, four o'clock, but, you know, we talked during the last work session and said, that's too early. Um, so, looking for public input about, you know, what potential time, um, you know, you would like to see, and that way we can take it back to the work session and, and see what we're talking about.
Can Karen brief you on a notice that the town received?
Absolutely. The town received a letter against the time change, uh, suggesting seven PM would be a better option than the, uh, six o'clock, uh, proposal, and it was signed by six residents, and it's dated November twenty-five, uh, two thousand and eighteen.
All right, thank you.
Any discussion?
Does anyone want to comment on, on what time they would like to suggest and see?
And, and one thing to consider is that we, we have staff that, that get off and they get paid while they're on the clock to wait for that, and then they have to drive home, and then they're expected to be back at work the next day at a, you know, early. So, um, you know, we, we, we're open, we'd like to get more turnout, more input, so we're, we're trying some different things in a, in an attempt to get more, uh, buy-in from our business community, um, those individuals who, uh, you know, they're nine to five, if we have an earlier time, they may be more apt to, uh, come to our town meetings.
Dennis Chesley, Indian Head Avenue. Uh, I worked in Washington DC for a long time, uh, and I think there's a large number of people, maybe fifty percent of the people, work uptown. If you're working in town, you can't get here before six, get back home before six PM. At least, I couldn't. Sometimes I was almost seven PM before I got home. So, I think four o'clock was just totally out of reason, five o'clock is out of reason, six o'clock is kind of stretching it, you're forcing somebody to race down the road to get here on time every month. Uh, I think seven would be a better time. I liked seven thirty when I was working, that gave me a chance to get home and eat dinner before I came to the meeting. And I think there's a lot of people in that, in that boat, coming home from work, want to sit down and eat meal, and then go to a meeting. And if you, if you get, and when you say getting to work early in the morning, I used to call that old dark thirty, because I left the house at, at five thirty to get to work. I was working nine hour days, so I was not getting off until five o'clock or so, and coming down Indian Head Highway, when I was working, was a long route, and then now I think it's even longer. So, uh, six o'clock is a stretch, is still a stretch. Five o'clock and four o'clock is totally out, out of the question. If you want to have people come to the meeting, they can't possibly make it then. So, I would recommend, I would suggest keeping it at seven thirty, but no, certainly no earlier than seven.
Makes sense. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
On the letter that was received by the town, that's also the case as well, they're requesting, uh, seven rather than seven thirty.
Just by a show of hands, how, how many individuals work in DC? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll discuss this more at the upcoming work session as well. Um, please send in your comments, we want to hear from you, um, and we'd love to increase turnout at our meetings, so that's, that's kind of what it's all about, and, and getting public input and, and feedback is, is very important for that. So, thank you.
And who's done vote on to decide? Just you guys?
It would be the town council, correct.
Just the council?
Can I just ask what the rationale was to offer a change? I'll, and then?
For, for me, um, you know.
If you're working for that?
Yeah.
How you going to get here?
I don't know, plane, time travel, I don't know, it, I had a long commute, so I, I didn't use the barometer, right? But over the past, almost five years, it seemed that participation has dwindled, so you can't keep doing the same thing, hoping for different, uh, results, right? So, uh, I'm open for, for any time that can possibly be a catalyst to get more individuals to this meeting, to understand the ramifications of their absence, right? So, seven thirty, it, it, it's fine if we can get individuals, right? But you can't keep doing the same thing. We have, what, twelve people here? Uh, maybe, I'm all sixteen, right? Maybe sixteen people here tonight, right? Um, but that, this is a, this is a full house, right? We are at capacity.
To the meeting, but every month.
You, you are one of our loyal, you are frequent flyers, I mean.
I take the twenty people.
You are.
Well, a year ago, it was pretty dwindling, but I mean, I think it's increasing.
It is, it is increasing, right? So, if we, if it turns out that seven thirty is the time, then let's stay with seven thirty, that's fine, but we can't keep doing the same thing.
So, that's the rationale, we can't do the same thing?
Because we don't have representation of the nearly four thousand people that live in town that are, are attending the meeting.
Well, there is also the rationale too, that you want to use the fiscal dollars rationally, and if the town staff did not have to be here and be paid, then that, would that be a better use of time? So, I understand the question from that perspective, certainly. That makes good, good economic sense to examine whether it makes sense for everybody to stay and be paid. That makes sense. But if the town doesn't show up, that's a problem too.
Right, additionally, if we are trying to promote business, we need to get business people here. Business people don't, or can't, are not attending our seven thirty meeting, right? So, a lot of them come to our work session. Wouldn't it be great to have our business people talk about their planning in front of a forum that's being recorded, so our residents can know that Indian Head is open for business? So, that's not the reason for saying we can't keep doing the same thing, because we're not achieving the results that, um, we as a council have envisioned.
But on the flip side of that, none of us can come to the business meetings, because we're working. So, we never know what's going on, and by the time we find out about it here, it's already a done deal, we don't get a say. The minutes aren't posted until after the fact.
Right, but it's, it's being, this meeting is always recorded.
This meeting is being, we're not talking about the work session.
No, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about having an earlier town meeting to have business.
On the flip side, you have the work session at what, three thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many people here can come to a meeting in three thirty? Yeah, not that many.
It's about the same number that can, I understand what you're saying.
Like I said, then when we come here, we're finding out everything after the fact.
Yes, ma'am.
It's already been voted on, done deal, decided, and we're just sitting here like, huh?
Some of the towns will have the thing where people can log in and submit their questions.
And I think this is kind of, you know, we talked about, you know, that's why we're having this discussion, because it's, it's a serious topic, from, you know, an economic feasibility issue to a turnout issue, and, and that's why we appreciate, you know, the feedback coming in, so.
Are the work sessions recorded?
Uh, the work sessions are recorded via minutes, and then?
Just minutes, so, but those are not posted until after they're approved at the next meeting.
Correct.
So, like, the last work session, we're having a meeting tonight, those minutes aren't up for me to read, so I can ask questions about them at the meeting.
Right, and, and that's a fiscal decision not to record those, but, you know, they're, I'm sure.
But where's the transparency?
The meetings are open, aren't they?
They're open, they're open meetings.
If you go with three thirty.
Is the agenda posted beforehand?
Yes.
Okay, so you know what's going on?
Right.
Okay.
Obligating to post the agenda.
Maybe one suggestion that I'll offer to make the meetings a little more interesting, that if you had some subject matter, you know, new business, you know, unfinished business, you know this, you know that, month after month after month, you conduct all your business in the work session.
Thank you.
And the public has no idea what the town's doing.
Exactly.
So, why would I want to come here and go through this, and listen to Karen give her call, and that's about it? That's what we get out of it. So, in the back of time, you guys, do a little transparency, and tell us what's going on in the town.
Makes sense, I agree, I agree.
I mean, we do have new business tonight, and, and we discuss things during the work session that are town business, because it is an open meeting, and then if it's a decision, you know, ordinance requirement, or falls under the categories of presentation, recognition, resolution, ordinance petition, or new business, we, we put it out on the town meeting agenda.
Yeah, at the town meeting, you bring it up, you vote on it, it's a done deal, and we're all sitting there asking questions after the fact.
Typically with ordinances, we, you know, things that are of heavy importance, we put it out, and then there's introduction, one month, and then the following month, there's the vote.
You make some very valid points, and, uh, you know, this is past my bedtime, but, but I'm here, and so I believe that if you're going to have a meeting, it needs to have some substance, right? So, um, I, I think we need to try to incorporate your input, so minutes, minutes are being captured, and, um, you know, if, if we need to adjust the work session, that may be something. But I, I do agree, I don't want to just have a meeting because it's mandated to have a meeting, but there's no substance. So, I, I appreciate the input that we're getting, and if you don't feel that you want to give a comment here, email the council, because we want to make sure that you are informed. We talked about transparency, and we want to do a lot of good things for this town, so we need input. You know, it's very trying, but year after year, Karen puts on events, and, um, you know, a lot of times we don't get anybody to attend. But thank you for the comments.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding the 2020 town meeting time change? Okay, seeing none, um, that'll be on the work session agenda again, and then brought back up, um, well, not back up in January, but we'll talk about it at the work session and, and let everyone know kind of the decision of the council. But please continue to send your input, uh, we're extremely interested. Um, under new business, Henderson property, um, we are pursuing the potential purchase of the Henderson property. Um, that way we can gain easements along the waterfront, and help potentially develop along the Potomac River waterfront. Um, this property is somewhat adjacent, not directly adjacent, but, uh, to our current project that we're working on, uh, the Potomac River Boardwalk. Um, so, gaining potential, um, easements along the Potomac River, we feel is very important for our potential future expansion in that, which we plan to look forward to. Um, so, Ryan, any other comment on that?
I don't have any. Um, I know that's something that council is interested in doing, they're interested in controlling what goes there. I, I think that's your biggest reason or rationale behind it. Um, I know it's been looked at by several other developers, um, that's pretty much all I have currently.
And we feel this is a great opportunity to where there's currently no Potomac River access with the boardwalk approaching here in the next few months. Um, we feel this property has, um, kind of ample opportunity, uh, to help, you know, the town, um, continue to grow and thrive, and, uh, and having kind of that Potomac River access that is not utilized right now, uh, is something that, you know, in the future we look to as being a gem in town.
You, you know, because if you look at, the only new shiny building in town is the Velocity Center and the Velocity Park, right? And that's a collaboration between public-private entities working together, and that's the kind of, uh, pro, those are the kind of projects we want to bring to town, right? So, we're looking at innovative ways to acquire property, I mean, the PNC Bank, that, it's, it's, it's slow-moving, but it's moving, right? So, they're, they're doing some things to move the ATM out, and then the building's going to be renovated, but we, we've determined that we have to be the masters of our own destiny. Historically, we have, the town has let business kind of drive what businesses come in town, where we want to be the driver of that. We want to determine who comes in town, where they're going to be located, the amenities that are here, and, and those types of things. So, we are, we need input, we need more people to come out, because the more input you get, the better decisions come out of there. So, you don't, if you can't make a meeting, you can always email, you can always call, right? Don't let a meeting be the barometer whether you're involved or not, because we have to make decisions. And with, without, in lieu of having your input, we're going to make a decision. We try, because there's three of us who have different opinions, and we try to come together and make a, the, the solution that best fits the residents of Indian Head, because we live here. So, if you can't make a meeting at three thirty, email us. If you'd like the transcripts from something prior to here, we can, I, I'm sure there's a way where we can publish those without violating some kind of Open Meetings Act or, and if you think we need to move the work session later, then that's probably what we need to do. But personally, I'm not going to keep doing the same thing, right? Not getting in the results. So, that's all I have to say.
And I know personally, uh, from a work session standpoint, and, and this isn't on this agenda item, we kind of went backwards, but, um, you know, if you email me, I always take my own personal notes, and I'll be clear when I send that to you, these are my own personal notes, as relates to the work session, but I, I'd be willing to send those to anyone if they reach out. That's something we can look into.
We could, right? But those things cost money. So, if, if, we, we have limited budgets, so if that's something the residents think that is viable, then we will find the funds to do that, right? If you, if you would like to be able to log in, I mean, there's systems like Snag It, where you can, or Swag It, where you can log in and you can see live streaming of work sessions. Municipalities do it all over the country. So, if that's something that gives you the insight that you need to, to give us your opinion, so we can make an informed decision, then we'll do it. We'll find the money from somewhere, I, I don't know.
Is this, uh, purchase of the Henderson property a joint venture?
Yes, uh, well, so, we're actually looking to partner with, um, the Charles County, um...
Improvement? Community Development?
Thank you.
Yes, which is a private entity.
Words slip in my mind. Um, so, we're looking to partner with the Charles County Community Development Corporation to come up with, you know, plans for the property and its development, um, similar to, you know, we look at, you know, plans from the past, uh, the two thousand and two, know, we look at, you know, plans from the past, the 2002, 2005 updated plan of the vision document, and we look at those and ways to, you know, tweak those, but also, you know, preserving that, and I stress this, preserving that riverfront easement for our potential future expansion of, you know, a potential, you know, longer extension of the boardwalk. But, you know, we see kind of the Henderson property, you know, the Perrin property next to it, and then the Post property further down the river as kind of the diamonds in the rough, per se, of kind of Indian Head's, you know, future development. So, you know, and it's been talked about for many years, those properties and many plans ago, you know, Warren when you were mayor and Dennis when you were mayor, and, you know, these plans were kind of all, you know, put together, and, you know, we feel that the town with, you know, nonprofit partners and private partners, you know, we think the iron's hot, so we think now's the time to pursue these opportunities.
Where would the access road be?
That is a phenomenal question. Like I said, you know, with our partners, as we develop plans.
We have not matured that enough to do that, so you would have an assessment done of the most viable place for that. We need to first look at the, can we acquire the property, right? And will that not increase our debt service too tremendously, right? But we would make sure that, for instance, when we gave the approval for the Siri, I think, the Siri project, right, we had to consider the flow of traffic and things that don't, so a similar assessment would be done.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, not to cut you off, but Ms. Bowie, I believe if they were to develop that property, I mean, like overly develop that property, they would have to extend Dogwood. I, I just, I could be speaking out of turn, and they may bash me for it a little later, but I think they would have to extend Dogwood. Pine Street couldn't handle all of the traffic.
Yep, that makes sense.
And that's similar to what, you know, the Molten Auto Project ran, suggested many years ago, is the extension of Dogwood.
Bonds, financial?
How much are they asking for?
I do not believe they're going to sell bonds, first, Mr. Bowie. Ma'am, I believe they're asking the actual assessed value of a half a million dollars. So they're asking five hundred thousand dollars, that's the assessed value, and they don't want a penny more than that.
How many are?
It's eight. That's a good question for the architects and engineers to get in and find out.
And as we develop it with critical area?
Some of it is, absolutely.
Any more questions as it relates to the Henderson property? All right. Seeing none, moving on to miscellaneous announcement of upcoming events. We have our annual tree lighting ceremony tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Come and join us and celebrate the start of the holiday season. I'll be there, all dressed up, in my Santa outfit. Hmm? Yeah. Twenty-fourth Annual Gingerbread House classes, December 6th, 6:00 PM, Sunday, December 8th, 1:00 PM here. Community Activities Committee, no meeting in December. Annual Holiday Festival and Vendor Fair, Tuesday, December 10th, 6 to 9, at the Village Green Pavilion. Town Hall, Community Affairs, Public Works will be closing at 12:30 on Friday, December 13th. Annual Community Dinner, Memorial and Ribbon Remembrance Dinner, I already said dinner. Saturday, December 14th, 6:00 PM. Planning Commission will meet Wednesday, December 18th, 5:30 PM, Village Green Pavilion. Town Council Work Session will meet Wednesday, December 18th, 3:30 PM at Town Hall. Parks and Recreation and Environmental Sustainability Committee will meet Wednesday, December 18th, at 7:00 PM, and followed by Environmental Sustainability at 7:30 PM. Indian Head Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Squad Annual Santa Run Through Town will be Monday, December 23rd, 5:30 PM. Town Hall, Community Affairs and Public Works will be closed Wednesday, December 25th, Thursday, December 26th, and Friday, December 27th. No trash pickup and no yard waste pickup. Recycling will be picked up on Friday, December 27th. Town Hall, Community Affairs and Public Works will be closed Wednesday, January 1st, no trash pickup. Yard waste will be picked up on Thursday, January 2nd. Recycling will be picked up on Friday, January 3rd. The next town meeting will be Monday, January 6th, at the allotted time. Village Green Pavilion and Community Activities Committee will meet Tuesday, January 14th, 6:00 PM, at the Village Green Pavilion. Okay? All right, and moving on to citizens' comments. If you have a comment, please approach the podium with your name and street, so we can get it on record.
Good evening, everyone. People call me Bear. My name is Barrett Travis, and I live at 68 Mattingly Avenue, down the street from Ryan and the councilman. Two things are happening at once in this meeting, well, one from the meeting and another that happened before this. There was an application for occupancy for Mamastellas, which closed down, creating a meeting at the Bryan's Road Fire Department that was attended by hundreds of people protesting. That application got turned down. However, the conversation that ensued as a result of those people was talking about economic development for the western half of Charles County, and that eastern Charles County is becoming almost overdeveloped. I mean, it is chock-a-block with retail, and we are in a desert over here on the western side. And so I'm asking, I mean, with all due respect, about your interest in gaining attendance and business people and trying to promote Indian Head Open for Business, I'm begging to go one step beyond that and partner with the Economic Council of Charles County to bring retail into this area. If I don't, I mean, Ryan, I see you smile. If I don't know what's going on, then I'm going to be standing here and asking for it to happen, because I don't know what efforts you guys are putting together with the Economic Council of Charles County. Indian Head might be open for business, but Charles County is, it feels like this is the bastard's stepchild. To that end, my wife and I are involved in a food co-op, in which we were approached by one of the members of the Charles County Economic Council, who was begging for, to ask me for help, literally coming up to us and begging, saying, please, if you come up with a plan, ask me for help, we're wanting to help you. That's pretty significant. So, two things. One, if it's not going on, please initiate one, and I'm here to help if it isn't, if it hasn't. And if it has started already, then I'm still here to help and volunteer to participate. And let us know what it is that you're doing in order to promote retail and business to come over to the western side of Charles County. Please.
What you're doing to block that kind of business from coming over here.
I'll take yours.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. And also what's being done to block that kind of business from coming over here?
That type of business is prohibited under zoning in the town, so that's, yeah. Correct, and I agree with you. Right, and as we talk about, you know, economic development, we talk about, you know, Potomac River Water, you know, front, we talk about, you know, the starting of the Velocity Park and the anchor tenant, that being CSM, and, you know, moving those kind of projects forward. You know, you talked about the food co-op, you know, I met with Angela back in January as she started to develop the plans, and, you know, we had a big meeting at the Black Box, which was really well-attended. So as of right now, you know, they're trying to drum up membership and find roles for different people in different places, and, you know, we're fully supportive of any, you know, institution, whether it be private business or food cooperative, like, you know, Angela, you know, has really started the ball rolling on that, fully supportive of that. And in fact, I think Angela's already started hunting me down for co-op dues. So personally, I'm supportive, but as mayor as well, you know, we're supportive of those kind of things moving here in town. If you look at our recent ULI study, that was put in 2017, kind of laid out a few different directions the town could take, and at that time, the Velocity Center was very embryonic. Things take time, economic development takes time, especially when you're kind of starting from a, you know, a lower place on the totem pole than, you know, your Waldorf's and the Play-Doh's of the world. But you can read that plan and read the plan in 2015 and see where we've put wins on the board throughout that, and kind of see kind of a common vision and goal that the town council set forward.
I got you there, but Mr. Travis wants us to work with the Charles County Economic Development Department. That was his initial conversation, so I think you need to address that.
Yeah, and we've, we've had conversations with them. Not all the conversations have been productive, if we're being, well, it's the how can we support you, and then, you know, when it's time to put up, when are they there? That's, that's always been the question, and, you know, it's been the question for decades as it relates to the town of Indian Head. It's, yeah, Indian Head, you know, can have a common vision and a plan, but, you know, are the commissioners on board, are the county going to support things? And, you know, we're developing relationships with our Charles County Commissioners and trying to, you know, smooth over some relationships with others, but, you know, at the end of the day, it has to be, you know, everyone wants to work together to bring Indian Head to a better place, and so we're going to work with our partners, you know, we talked about the Community Development Corporation, that's just been started up. We're working with them to, you know, help make Indian Head a better place, Indian Head Food Co-op. But from a county level, you know, we've gotten some resistance on certain things, and some things we've been able to achieve. But, you know, at the end of the day, the things that, when everyone works together, that's what gets through, so.
I mean, from my perspective, I think we have a pretty healthy relationship with the economic development. Politics is based on personalities, and many of the personalities that set up roadblocks historically are no longer there. If you have ideas that, you know, we can pursue with economic development, we're all for that. The team at the county is very good at what they do. Why are things not as healthy on this side of the county is an excellent question that we pose to our commissioner's body, not only District Two Commissioner, but the commissioners as a whole. We need them to really take the western side of Charles County seriously. So when it comes to the adult entertainment, our ordinance does not allow for that, neither does the county's ordinance. The use and occupancy was clearly specific on what they could use that entity for, and the applicant tried to change that. So it's not authorized in the county, it's not authorized in the town.
Well, it's not authorized in that, in the western zoning area of the town.
The conversation was, after that, I understood that, it was a whole thing about development on the western side of Charles County, and I brought it up only because I wanted to talk about that conversation. Mamastellas responded.
Well, but we've received a lot of emails from individuals about that.
Then you have a county commissioner stand up at that meeting, and, you know, I have a witness that was there at the same time, who says, when we found out about this from all of you, this is a problem. Whenever you have a county commissioner stand in front of hundreds of residents and say outright that we just didn't know, and we found out from you, are you kidding me?
Right, that's a problem.
That's a problem, whenever you've got a business stating it's going to open, and advertising it's going to open on Facebook and social media, and we're the ones that have to do community activities, that's the issue.
Agreed.
Yeah, but let's, let's take it back a little bit now. Remember, when they came to the county, it's a banquet hall.
No, I understand.
Under false pretenses.
So when they came to the county.
I get it, I get it, but at the same time, it takes two seconds to do research on its applicant, and the issues would have come up, because as the sheriff got up and said, this is an individual who's already under charges and already handled this, you said it at the meeting?
Right, so their process is broken. I, I think our process is a little more rigorous than, than that.
Who's at the podium?
I'm sorry?
Warren Bowie on Maple Street. I was at that meeting, and it got a little embarrassing. Were any of you all there?
I was not.
I was watching the live feed.
Pardon?
I was watching the live feed.
It was a little embarrassing to hear people speak how awful the town of Indian Head and Bryan's Road. It really is. It makes you feel like you're a second-class citizen.
Oh, absolutely.
So we need to do something. Two months ago, I wrote a letter to Commissioner Ruben Collins, asking him to look into the Charlie Wright Park over here as to whether or not the town could take, if they would give that to the town, and the town could do whatever it wanted to do with that property. Have you heard, have you had discussions with Mr. Collins?
The council has had internal conversations as it relates to that piece of property, and they talked to me about the maintenance and the cost, but we haven't heard from the county.
Has the council had any conversation with Commissioner Robbins, Ruben Collins?
I have not had a meeting with him since that day. Our monthly meetings pick back up in January.
Do you plan to discuss that with him?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
What is the council's position on that?
I believe the last we left it is looking into potential maintenance costs for taking it over, and then evaluate, oops, sorry, evaluating what kind of costs we'd be taking on with the property.
I don't have a voting say. I voted no for maintenance reasons, but I don't have a voting say. But I think the last time y'all talked about it, y'all were talking your dog park, you were talking the skate park, you were trying to make the fields a little bit more usable than what they're currently being used for now.
Are they being used at all?
Not very much. I personally tried to get the field and the amount of bureaucracy to get the field, so I think it's a great idea. But we have to be fiscally responsible to make sure we can maintain it. The county, they at least cut it, right? If we can't get it cut because of financial constraints, then it does us no good. But I think it's a wonderful idea, and that made the agenda, and when the mayor meets with the commissioner president in January, it's on the agenda.
Work out some memorandum of understanding of, they continue the maintenance and we do the programs.
That would be the ideal scenario.
Work on it.
I am.
Great, thank you. Charlie Wright Park is right behind Indian Head Elementary.
What you're running into is there, there really aren't any Indian Head teams like they used to be, so you don't see the overabundance of Little League baseball teams out there and the soccer fields and the football fields. I mean, it's just, that's the lack of use that's being, that's taking place there.
But wouldn't it be a great place to park commercial vehicles?
No.
I'm just, it's an idea, right?
The conversation they had during the work session was the dog park and skate park, she had the kids coming.
Putting area.
And, and, and no harm, no disrespect, but it's being used as a dog park right now, anyway, because I constantly see the folks.
It's amazing how many people let their dogs loose.
And the dogs that hate on the property.
So it'd be great to have a fence around it. So it's on the agenda, as the mayor stated, for January.
Any other citizens' comments? All right, seeing none, meeting adjourned. Happy holidays.